Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. I'm Laura and this is your FOS briefing for the week of March 3rd. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. Meetings are open to the public or watched live on the city's YouTube channel. If you can't watch, catch the recorded meeting on demand on the YouTube channel or by subscribing to the Council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. The city has partnered with the Community Blood Center for a blood drive on March 13th from 1:00 to 5:00 PM in Harris Park Community Center. Your donation can save lives. Register today on the city's website. If you see a pothole, report it on LS Connect. It is a quick and easy way for residents to report common non-emergency concerns such as potholes and streetlights. Simply snap a photo, mark the location, and submit the report. The LS Connect app is free to download on any Apple or Android device and is also available online at cityofls.net. And happy March. Shake off the winter blues and jump into spring this weekend in downtown Lee Summit for the Spring Open House Friday and Saturday. Shop new home decor, plants, apparel, gifts, and more. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
This is the best place to work.
I love working here.
I feel very blessed.
I love it here. I look forward to coming to work every day, being a part of this team.
Like a family away from home.
Where everyone feels like everybody knows their name.
A city that supports you. We see that with our benefits.
A pension, vacation days, job security.
Being able to be heard. We feel valued. We feel respected.
Lee Summit is a very progressive city.
It's growing. It's thriving.
We have this drive towards not just doing a job, but doing it with a spirit of excellence.
I had the opportunity to continue to grow regardless of 30-plus years doing this kind of work.
It's more than just dollars and cents.
We're here really to give back.
Providing a service to better a community.
To go out and serve people.
To be a part of something bigger than yourself.
If I would have known what I know now, years ago, I would have been here much sooner.
It's Mayor Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few of us are getting questions. I know I've gotten a few questions about the plans. So I didn't know if, just for the public knowledge.
I'm not a politician. I feel like I'm just an average person in Lee Summit. They have a football field set up inside these cones or their football fields. Our two-car garage is gonna, we're gonna bring the driveway back through here and it's gonna go right here and then... So my family has chickens. When we first got chickens, my husband said, "Don't treat them as your pets. Treat them as chickens because we're going to end up, we're gonna be eating the eggs and I would like to use them for meat. So don't treat them as your pets." Well, we now have six chickens that I consider my pets and I will not let him kill for meat. So we live downtown and we love living downtown. These are my children. The first one's Lincoln and Amira and Sophia and Caleb. This is a great neighborhood. Downtown is one big community and all of the kids get together and they play basketball and we like to walk to the farmer's market. Here, hold my hand. It's an easy walk, probably less than 10 minutes. The farmer's market has always been a very important part of my life and my family's life. As a matter of fact, when my daughter started kindergarten, I dropped her off and I was going shopping at the farmer's market right behind Lee Summit Elementary. And I was teary-eyed because she was my first and she was going off to kindergarten. And Terry, the butterfly lady, the one that's in the purple shirt and she used to make little butterfly stickers for everyone. She gave me a big hug and was just so empathetic to the fact that my daughter had just started school. How are you guys doing? Doing well. How are you?
Very good.
A lot of the farmers there, my kids have, they've watched my kids grow up. I love Lee Summit in general. I love that it still has a small-town feel while embracing growth and the arts and diversity. And I feel like downtown specifically embodies that. My kids go to Lee Summit Elementary and a lot of their teachers live downtown and a lot of the business owners from downtown live downtown. So when we're out walking downtown, we see so many people we know. I lived in Africa until I was five and then we moved to the United States and I've lived in Lee Summit since. Oh, a lot of my childhood, my mom was a single mom and I feel like I was essentially raised by my community and being on council and it's just such an important way to give back to the community that raised me.
I'm Mayor Prior.
I'm Mia Prior.
We solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I present the cull summations.
That they of April 2022.
The election process was fun. I got to go door-to-door and talk to people, which is my absolute favorite thing to do, is talking to people and learning about people. I even had people inviting me into their house for dinner or inviting me back to their house to meet their spouse. And I actually, I knocked on a door and the lady that answered the door was my kindergarten teacher. So it was a lot of fun. Is it on? Hi, everyone. I'm Councilmember Mia Prior. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I have one on. Can you not? Maybe I'll watch. I love being a council rep for District 1. I know everyone says this, but District 1 is by far, in my opinion, the best district. Rain Tree Lake, that's part of District 1. I love that community. Actually, my husband and I got married at the clubhouse in Rain Tree Lake. I really love all of South Lee Summit. I love the growth that they're going to be experiencing soon and that they've already experienced. I wanted to say that if you guys have a concern, please, please come tell us what your concern is because we can only, we can only address and help with what we know. We're there to kind of bridge that gap, bridge that gap between constituents in the city and we're the voice of our constituents and we can go to the city and voice what their concerns are, what their ideas are. So if you have a concern, definitely make us aware. So my big priorities are public safety. That's always one of my top priorities. I've always wanted to make sure that first responders were supported. I think that that's super important to me and to many in our city. But also, I, I wanted to influence the growth in Lee Summit. I wanted to influence the type of businesses we get here and the type of activities there are to do for our families. If we're gonna continue to grow downtown, how important it is to focus on people that already live here and the infrastructure we already have in place.
Our first presentation tonight is gonna be Assistant City Manager Ryan Eelm, who's going to talk about that very exciting farmer's market plaza.
But I want to show you the most recent rendering, fly-through video of that. That's really the best way to kind of get a good sense of what this will look like in the near future.
To see it developing into something as big as it's going to be across from City Hall is super exciting to me. I can't wait for it to get built and to start welcoming people into what the farmer's market's gonna be, but also everything else that goes along with that development. Do you want to hold it?
Drop it.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Bye. I'm just an average person in Lee Summit that wanted to be a voice of many that, that sometimes feel like they don't have a voice. Yeah, I'm not a politician. I'm just a mom that cares.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, let us come together in unity and purpose as we begin this meeting. May wisdom guide our decisions, respect shape our discussions, and service to our community remain our highest goal. We also ask for safe travels for our mayor, city manager, and council on our journey to Jefferson City tomorrow. May we be protected on the road and find success in our efforts. Amen.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the City of Lee Summit Regular Session number 30. Can I get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Rader. Present. Councilmember Prior.
Here.
Councilmember Shields. Absent. Mayor Protim Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell. Absent. Councilmember Carlisle.
Present.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Thank you. Before we do the agenda, I need to do some agenda management. I'd like to remove item 8A. It's Bill number 25047 from the agenda. We're, they're finalizing some things on this. It was, it's an emergency ordinance, so they're trying to push it forward as quickly as we can. Has to do with, oh, the police department and the installation of radio tower, or microwaves and a radio tower, but they're not quite ready for its approval, so I'm removing that from the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? I have a motion by Councilmember Carlisle and a second by Councilmember Rader. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes 7-0. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Prior. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously. Thank you. Next is Council Roundtable. These are items of general interest. Things may be going on in your district or in the community that you want to make sure that we're aware of. I do thank you for the quick prayer on the trip to Jeff City tomorrow. That was nice. Because we are gonna try to trek over there at 8:00 AM, I believe. All right, not seeing any Council Roundtable. So we're gonna go into our first item of business, which is a public hearing. I'm gonna close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A. This is an appeal of a special event permit denial. You want to pizza me is the applicant 110, excuse me, 110 Southeast 4th Street. Connor Branson, that is, is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right. Does the applicant have a presentation? Or do you want the city to go first?
The city can go first.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hector Soto, Senior Planner. And just one point of clarification. So this is, this is a public hearing with lowercase p and an h, not capital P and H. So this hearing is in front of you as an appeal, but does not require legal notice in the paper or any publishing of that sort. So...
Okay.
So that's why I'm not entering any list of exhibits. So it's not like your typical hearing that you would have.
Thank you.
Okay. So the application before you is an appeal, as you heard by the title that was read by the mayor. It's an appeal to a denial to a special event permit to operate a food truck in the area denoted here by the green star. It's the north end of the parking lot that is occupied by Fringe Beer Works, where they do the packaging and I think some merchandise-type use in that particular building. So if you've been by the site lately, there's currently a food truck that's on the site, but it's not operating. So they've submitted a special event permit to operate at that north end, just off of the alleyway. So the application that was submitted was to operate the food truck at this location seven days a week. There would be lunch service between 10:00, 11:00 AM and 2:00 and then dinner service from 5:00 PM to 10:00 on Sundays to Wednesdays and then up until 2:00 AM on Thursdays and Saturdays. So the image here on the left is the food truck. Here, there's an asterisk that does call out that the ordinance, the UDO, does make, just have certain restrictions on the hours of operation that are allowed for food trucks located in the Central Business District. So the hours that are currently listed are that they're only allowed between 9:00 PM and 2:00 AM unless otherwise approved by the Director of Development Services or this body as part of this application should you choose to do so. So just to give you a little bit of background as to where the 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM came from. So the food truck regulation came online back in 2012. At that time, there were a couple downtown businesses that had some food trucks that they wanted to offer some of that service in the downtown. And, but their businesses were primarily geared toward, because some of them had already brick and mortar, they did want to more target some of the bar patrons. So that's why they were more focused on the 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM hours, knowing that they would be able to shut down the brick and mortar operations, but then offer these services from, from these hours on. We've not, early on, we had quite a bit, we had a fair amount of interest in the operation of food trucks. We haven't had very much lately in the downtown. You do see some along 3rd Street and primarily along 291 in front of the, at Home. At Home, that's where you typically see them. And outside of the Central Business District, there are no hours that they're restricted to. So right now, the hours of operation are strictly limited in the Central Business District. And again, it was primarily for, to accommodate some of the specific needs that the food trucks had at the time. And also, there was some concern as to whether or not, what impact some of operating food trucks in the downtown might have on other brick and mortar restaurants. So that was just a little bit of background in that regard. So the, again, the property here is outlined in red with the food truck location in green. So you could see that this particular area is part of the block that makes up essentially the southeast corner of the Central Business District. Along the fringe, you see some Transitional Neighborhood Zone. That's Green Street here to the east. 4th Street here to the south. So you do have some residential zoning. So we're starting to get into the fringe where we're starting to get a transition of zoning and uses from the Central Business District, which is primarily commercial businesses with some interspersed residential uses out onto some of the fringe that starts a transition to single-family development. To the immediate east of this are five lots that, but the Fringe Beer Works property. All of them are, for lack of a better term, they're all rent or occupied properties. Four of them are residential in nature. This one here, if I can, let's see. So this one here is a commercial building. It was a single-family residence that was converted for commercial use. The other one to the north and the three to the south are single-family residences that are all for rent. To the north, you see, you know, there's the public lot, 3rd Street Social, Lee Summit Social Services to the immediate west. You know, beyond that, you've got VFW, Cooper, or what, Amco, Vogue Condos off to the north and to the west. So here's a view from the, from the alleyway of the residences to the, to the east. You can see that, for the most part, there's no fence or screen or any kind of barrier separating those five properties from the Fringe Beer Works property, except for this particular lot, which is right off the alley, which has the four-foot chain-link fence. This particular residence is occupied, well, this is the shed, but this property here is an occupied property. And then about three residences down, there's another occupied property. Everything else is currently vacant. So three of the five properties that back up to this site are vacant. The applicant did provide a signed petition that shows that the occupied residents at this location and at this location, who they were able to contact, did sign a petition being supportive of the special event permit. And again, the, these two middle and this far southern property are vacant. So of course, no one signed off on those. So the regulations that are in play that staff considered in their decision was, again, the mobile food truck vending regulations. And primarily, and this is where we bring in some of the more parallel type of uses related to restaurants that have outdoor operations, is that one of the areas of concern that staff had as to the potential impact on the adjoining properties was that other types of restaurant-related uses that have outdoors activities associated with them do have a minimum 100-foot setback requirement in order to help mitigate some of the noise, lights, smell, impact on those adjacent, on those adjoining, adjoining properties. So staff, in considering those, made a parallel comparison to what will be an outdoor operation in the food truck here at this parking lot. Like I previously mentioned, two of the occupied properties did sign off saying they're supportive of it and three are vacant. So in that respect, there doesn't appear to be an issue, but when staff is making these decisions, we're also looking in the long view, the long-term impacts that they may have on future residents of those vacant properties or if there is turnover for the two properties that are currently occupied. So staff, in and of itself, doesn't have an issue with the use so much of some of the concerns regarding that use being that close to those properties to the immediate east. So in a nutshell, that was the rationale behind staff's denial. Now, and we continue to recommend denial just on that basis alone. Now, I did provide some language here, should you want some guidance, that if it is the pleasure of the City Council to move for approval or to approve the appeal, there's some language here that I provided that you might be able to use as guidance, which what I would ask is that, because the hours allowed by right are limited to 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM and they're looking to operate outside of those, that any motion to be made that does include hours outside of the 9:00 PM to 2:00 AM include, include what is, that you would like to be reflected in there. So that we can, so it's clear to the applicant what hours you're fine with operating and then staff can also include those as we make sure that they continue to be compliant with, with any approval that you give here. So with that, I'll yield to any questions you may have or I don't know if the applicant would want to add anything, but I'll yield at this point.
Okay. What street is that, Mr. Soto? The 4th, not 4th Street.
Fourth Street to the south and then Green Street here.
That's Green Street?
Yeah.
All right, give me one second to get my bearings. Got you. Thank you. Okay, here it is. So it's the alley off of 4th Street. It's not, it's not 4th Street. It's the alley that backs up to the 3rd, the 3rd Street Social parking lot. That, that helps me get my bearings better.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm gonna, usually I go to the applicant next for questions, but while you're here, does anybody, we can always come back to Mr. Soto in a second before I hear from the applicant. Councilmember Prior?
Thank you, Mayor. So my concern, just after hearing you, is, do you know the hours that they serve food? So I was looking up the hours of some of the other pizza places in downtown Lee Summit, but do you know the food hours? Because they're, I know like their bar hours are different than food hours. Do you know what the food hours are of like Johnny Joe's or Mainslice? Because it doesn't say on their website.
Offhand, I don't, no. But we can, I can look it up.
Okay. Have they, have any of the other pizza places said anything, like, opposed this, or were they made aware of this at all to be able to?
No, because it's not that type of public hearing, there wasn't any notification. And those would be, even if it was that type of application, they'd be beyond.
Far enough away?
They'd be far enough, they wouldn't have notice of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. Hector, how long, and I apologize if I miss it, if I missed it in your presentation, a special event permit, how long does that last?
We typically issue them for up to one year.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thank you, Mayor. So Hector, if in fact, we allowed them to do this, and the vacant properties were inhabited, and we started getting complaints, and they have a one-year, what happens? They still have the one-year, and there's just nothing that you can do, or?
Beyond enforcing other ordinances that are already on the books, such as, like, noise ordinance, any property maintenance, if there are concerns about trash or anything like that, there are. I don't believe that there is anything, because it's not quite like a special use permit, where there's a delineated method by which you can revoke one. So I believe it would be good for the, for one year. And after that point, it can be renewed, a new one can be issued, or we can bring another one. If the concern, if the concerns persist, we can bring forward another presentation after, at the expiration of it. And again, since they would be looking up, operate outside of those delineated hours, that'd be a decision that this body could make at that point.
Well, would there be, would we be able to put language in there now, as part of that special use permit, to say that if, it's okay now, but if we start having complaints? No, we have to, is that possible to do that?
Mark Dunning, City Manager, I'll add a little more to what Hector provided. So Hector's in that space of, you know, a special event permit and what, what other ordinances might apply to this. In addition to a special event permit, a business license would be required. And so there are provisions in the code that allow the council to hold, it's another hearing, on whether to revoke a business license. So that's another tool that's available that would say, well, it's not the special event that's being revoked, but it's your ability to conduct business in Lee Summit. So that's another tool that could be used, based on whatever you're hearing, if there were concerns with that, that could be brought forward. But to craft in all these limitations, that would, that would take us some time to try to carve into those.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Representative Tim Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. So Hector, just, if you can just confirm, the main reasons for staff's recommendation for denial, one is the 100-foot separation, that was one of the reasons. What was the other one?
That is primarily.
That's a primary one.
From there, it stems off of the noise concerns, light, the potential for that impact on those adjoining occupants.
Okay, but really, the main potential concern is the residential properties.
Correct.
And can you confirm then, so those residential property owners or residents were okay, they signed off a waiver to go ahead and allow this?
They signed a petition that the, that the applicant went door-to-door, it's my understanding, to contact and explain to them what it is that he's looking to do, and he provided a petition showing that those two occupants did sign off on expressing support.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. Hector, could you, you said that there, maybe it was in the application and you didn't say it, but somewhere it said there's a concrete pad there now? Do you have, you had the picture of the food truck, but I didn't, still didn't see a concrete pad around there. Can you show where that's at?
This picture cropped it out. I know you're not going to see it, but there's like a little corner. It's beyond this, it doesn't, it doesn't extend across the full width. It basically extends across the width of the gate. So it doesn't go property line to property line, and this property is 40 feet wide, so it just covers enough of a path to get a vehicle in and out.
Okay, for the alley?
Yes.
Is that what it was for, just to extend that alley out a little bit?
Yeah, to provide a transition between the drive and the alley.
Okay, but there's no issue with that food truck sitting on the gravel?
It would have to sit on an asphalt or concrete surface. So that's something that's been.
So they would have to pour another pad?
That, or, now, this, the back parking lot here is partially paved. So there's the newer concrete pad right at the alley, and then there are portions of the parking lot, as you get a little bit further south, I guess, that are paved. But this immediate area that backs up right here, it is asphalt, it is gravel. So if they wanted to park right there, they would have to pour a pad or asphalt.
And that entire property is owned by Fringe?
It is, it's not, Fringe is a, is a renter, it's owned by, Guy Gronberg owns the property.
Okay, yeah, I did see that, okay. But, so the owner's okay with it, along with the renter?
Correct.
And then all the renters that abut are good with it as well?
Of the occupied properties to the east, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's hear from the applicant at this time, we can always ask more questions.
Just real quick.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you state your names, and then also speak right into that microphone, so everybody can hear you?
My name's Connor Branson.
And I'm Todd Branson, Dad. So where the star is, where the truck would be, when the city poured the concrete pad, was kind of a transition from, when you did the pavers for Third Street Social, there's been, there was a little bit of settling in that area from all the equipment that was used, and they used that entire lot of Fringe Beer Works lot to store that stuff for the project that took place. So that area where they poured the pad is kind of more of a transition, because it was kind of messed up. Below that gravel, that gravel was spread out around that concrete pad, and below that gravel is asphalt. So what, what I intended to do, when we were going back and forth on our, on our application, was to create a dig, you know, scoop out the gravel, because they candidly, they, they have probably a 25-foot area of gravel to kind of smooth that transition out to the rest of the parking lot, we could easily take that down to the pavement, which is below. So it is an asphalt parking lot all the way through. There's probably a little bit of mud and things like that from that project that you guys did, the Third Street Social project, but I don't think it's anything we couldn't get ourselves down to get a solid area. Keep in mind, that's a food trailer, it's, you pull it. So it's not an engine or anything like that, you know, the sound and things like that isn't as, isn't as prevalent. But, but anyway, you know, and then when Hector and his team, they, they denied it based upon, like, like he said, the 100-foot rule. And, and I live downtown Lee Summit, I live in Vogue condominiums, so there's an opportunity cost of living down here, we know that, right? At 4:00 a.m., there's a train or whatever. So all of those houses in question are all zoned commercially, and yet used residentially. So if you go look at those, and I walk by them all the time, it's like Jim's right there, candidly, two of those properties that are vacant are not, there hasn't been people in them for a long time. So the other one was a salon that has recently been sold, which has a parking lot in the back, things like that. It doesn't have a kitchen, it's not a residential property, it's a half-bath with no kitchen. So, you know, you live down there, you understand there's going to be some sound, there's going to be some things, just, you know, I moved out of a golf course community in Raymore. Guess what? I gave that up to come downtown Lee Summit, right? So I understand there's going to be some sounds. But, you know, candidly, where this is, it's a collaboration we're doing with Fringe Beer Works, we're going to be able to have the truck right there. If you live downtown Lee Summit, you understand too, that after COVID, a lot of places aren't even open for lunch, you know? I mean, Third Street Social's open, not the same venue that we would be at, and Llewellyn's. And then you have to go Taco Holic's, and you go up the hill, and a lot of those places don't open till like 4:00 in the afternoon. And I think your pizza place, that new one, the Johnny Joe's or whatever, I believe it's 5:00, 5:00 p.m. that it opens, or 4:00. So, but Mainslice, I believe, has full hours, seven days a week, I believe. But, you know, it's just a different, it's a different venue, Lee Summit doesn't have anything like it. We're just moving in from, what, two and a half years at the West Bottoms down there, and we all live in Lee Summit, and it just seemed like a, an opportunity to be down here, why not put it in a, in a great area, you know, like downtown Lee Summit? So, you know, that was kind of the idea behind it, and we've been kind of going back and forth, but candidly, I went door-to-door and talked to those residents, those two people that live there, and they've been seeing the truck sit there, and they're like, when do you guys get open? You know, they're excited, so, and they understand too, they're right there next to the restaurants and the, and the thrift stores and everything, and, and it's, you understand, when you live down there, you just deal with a little bit of extra sound and whatnot. And we won't, we won't create, I, I say, you know, like, if, if Llewellyn's has a band on a Friday or Saturday night, that'll create more traffic and things going on than we'll probably create in a year, you know what I mean? So that's a fact. But, but anyway, what questions do you have for us?
Okay, thanks, sir. Councilmember Carlisle?
Thank you, I really just have one question. You say it's a trailer and not a truck, so it's not going to be sitting there idling, is what you're saying? But it is powered by something?
Yeah, powered by a generator. I have a Honda, Honda 7,000-watt generator, it's categorically super quiet, that's the category it falls under for how many decibels that it emits, and I purchased that in the previous to, in order to have a quieter option at my previous location to not disturb a business that I was right next to.
And is it gas-powered?
That generator is gas-powered, yes.
Okay, but there's not like horrible exhaust or anything that come off of it?
No.
I was somewhere, and somebody had a really not-good one, and it was making people ill.
Sure, yeah, yeah, they definitely make, the ones that are made for construction areas, right, those are very loud and do have a higher emission with those engines. The categorically super quiet ones do not have that, they have a lower emission and a much lower decibel sound.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. I had a question for Hector again, if I may. So as I remember, that zoning is T and Z, is that correct along there? On both sides of Green Street?
The east side of Green Street is T and Z. The subject property is CBD, so it's in a transition point, yes.
CBD, okay, okay.
Well, Mr. Soto, to be, to be accurate, though, this is showing that it's in the CBD area.
Is that not what I said? I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, the, the Councilmember Rader is talking about these houses.
Yeah, on the other side.
No. Right, she's correct, on the other side. You've got your pin on the other, on the, on the other side of Green Street, whereas she's asking about these houses beside the property?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry if I misspoke, yeah, so the properties on the east side of Green Street, which are here, are, are zone T and Z. The west side of Green Street is CBD.
All these houses are zoned CBD?
All of those are, so yes.
Okay, very good. So, again, I don't know if this is a comment or a question. If we were to allow this to happen, or for them to get what they needed, and we have a ordinance, basically, this is that there has to be 100 feet away from residential, then in the future, it, I mean, it just changes things to, as I see it, to, for businesses to be able to then be closer than 100 feet from a residential area. I mean, it sets a precedence, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, the 100 feet.
Or do you see it that way?
The 100 feet that we were using, we were using similar use in, applied across other zoning districts for outdoor-specific type of restaurants. So, so let's say, for example, there's like Farfali here. If, if they were to, let's say, instead of doing a food truck, they wanted to occupy the inside of the building, there's no 100-foot setback separation. So nothing in the central business district for internally-based restaurant or fully-housed restaurant, there's no setback separation. We were looking for parallel types of uses, like a drive-through, drive-up restaurant, that would have outside, outside operation. So this one would have an outdoor pickup window, outdoor ordering area, outdoor, I'm suppo, whether or not they provide outdoor seating, there are going to be some people that may sit there and eat outside. And some, so looking at some parallel uses, we saw that there is, in order to mitigate some of those impacts, 100-foot setback is, is applied. So the U D O doesn't explicitly say that food trucks are subject to a 100-foot setback. We were looking at parallel-type uses with similar potential impacts on residential uses, and thought, well, if the concern is some of these things that happen outside of a building, this use would have similar activities outside of a building. So we were looking at applying the 100-foot setback here to mitigate those impacts, if that makes sense.
It makes sense now. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlisle? Now, still, let's, let's still do questions if we can, because I have a couple of questions. Okay, Mr. Soto, Mr. Branson said he lived in the Vogue. The Vogue are residences up top, and then down below, there are commercial. And it's probably in the CBD area, is that correct?
It is, it is CBD, yeah.
Okay, and so you're saying the distinction here is, like, where's the 100-foot mark on this go-to? Is it, is it, is it just the properties that are in the CBD, or are you talking about more than that?
So, so here's kind of a distinction. So for something like Llewellyn's, the ordinance says, because it's an indoor restaurant, I mean, it might have an outdoor patio, but it's an indoor restaurant, it's a sit-down restaurant. The ordinance says specifically that in the central business district, understanding that there are vertical mixed uses with, you know, first-world commercial residential.
There's a bunch of them around, yep.
Right, so in those cases, there's no, there's an exception to any separation requirement.
Because those people are moving in, and they understand that there's commercial there?
You do understand. Like Mr. Branson said, there's, there's an expectation around the downtown area, we have these mixed uses, that some of these things are going to happen.
Right, so at any point, those houses on Green Street, right beside the subject property, the ones that are in the CBD zoning, at any point, any of those could go commercial without going before City Council?
It wouldn't require rezoning, yes.
Yes. But those people too kind of have an expectation that, you know. How would you guys position the food truck in the back? Because like, when I, when we think of why there is a 100-foot mark, we're thinking from council's perspective, and with regard to sound, yes, that's one thing. He mentioned, even, I mean, hey, if you're serving food outside, there's going to be napkins and stuff to fly away. So, you know, we don't want food on the ground and things of that nature. So where would you position this food truck, and, and how would that, how would that look?
Idea is the poor pad, are you familiar with where you guys poured that little concrete pad?
We've got it now, I mean.
So alongside that, vertically, so the, the trailer is approximately eight by 18, so it would go right alongside the pad, the concrete pad?
Can you show us with the pen, with the mouse?
It's here?
Show me the rectangle type of area that you would probably locate.
So we would essentially be right in here.
So you would go longways?
Yeah, that was the idea.
So you would, but you would serve to the middle of the, of the parking lot? And so you would back, you would back to the house?
That's correct.
Okay. Where would the generator be?
It's on that backside.
Okay.
The port, the port where it plugs into, is that backside.
So people, if they were to hang out, they wouldn't be hanging out in their backyard? Not, not as likely to eat?
Keep in mind, too, we're on a, we're on Fringe's business location, we're not, the idea is we're not going to leave it a mess, you know, at night or whatever, it's obviously, you know, you clean it up every evening after shift or whatever, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
What's the lighting like back there at night?
The lighting? Lighting at night?
How good is the lighting?
Well, Third Street Social's pretty lit up, and it's coming right off of that, so.
And then I have my own lighting as well.
Are you?
Yeah, that, that is powered by the generator, I have floodlights, and then a few on the actual trailer itself.
Then, are they allowed to do music and things like that, Mr. Soto? Are you guys planning on doing any kind of music?
Performing, like, having dance, oh, but having a radio?
Yeah.
We did in our previous location, but whatever is within ordinance.
Okay, what's, what would be the, the restrictions or regulation on that?
It would be the typical noise ordinance, which would govern between 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So after 10:00 p.m., you really can't have anything more than 55 decibels.
Right.
On, on, on the rece- -on, on the receiving property for residential.
All right.
Sorry. Shinobara Planning Manager, to add a little bit more information on that, I did do a quick search on the Honda generator that they spoke about. And for that 7,000 model, it's listed as a 58-decibel limit, or the decibel reading to be 58 decibels. According to the noise ordinance, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, the limit at the residential use, so the property line, whether it's residential zoning or residential use, is limited to 50 decibels, or 55 between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So, we can have further conversation on if this is the exact model, but this is the super-quiet 7,000-kilowatt model that they spoke about. It exceeds all decibel levels.
Well, the concern I have with that statement is that we had it next to an outdoor theater, a performing center, where it came from in the West Bottoms, and we had to buy that one specifically so that it, you didn't hear it in the outdoor. People who were 50, 80 feet away, performing on stage, didn't hear it. So, candidly, it's a super-quiet generator. It's not something that you, you know, typically see, so.
Okay. I think at this point, this is not a public hearing, Mr. Head or Mr. Dunning, so I don't need to follow the same order. We can just start commenting and have a conversation.
Yeah.
All right. So, you guys, I don't have to go out of the public, out of a public hearing to make comments. So, at this point, I'm going to open it up for comments and discussion, and does anybody of the three people that are chimed in here, or four, are there any of you that want to ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Pryor is going to ask questions, so I'm going to ask you all to stay up here for a minute. We may bring you back up, but I, once we ask the last four questions, I'm going to let you guys just kind of sit, sit back and let us discuss it. So, go ahead, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Would that 58 decibels, would it be any louder than like what Llewellyn's has, like, as far as like music, it wouldn't be, right? Or any of the other live music that's down there a lot?
Glitter.
I, I knew the answer, but I just wanted to, yeah.
So, 65 decibels is basically normal speaking voice level.
Okay, okay. That's a good comparison. And then, I do have a comment. Do you want me to, do you want me to go ahead and say my comment, or no?
Any other questions? Okay, you guys can all take a seat if you want while we discuss this. We might bring you back up. Mr. Soto, stay close for us, would you? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. So, I've been to the Iron District, and I actually love the Iron District, and I've been wanting to see some more food trucks or things like this in downtown, especially, yeah, so I'm in, I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Carlyle?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you hit on some of the concerns I had, which is why I have no more questions. But, really, my only concern was, you know, making sure that we're, we're not letting trash just fly everywhere. Other than that, I mean, you guys, you walked door to door to see if you could get support. So, I'm not thinking you're going to be a bad neighbor if there is an issue, but if there is an issue, we do have another avenue we can take with that, if you decide not to want to cooperate with us anymore. I have no problem with that being there. I think it's going to make those people that live there a lot hungrier, smelling pizza all night, but hey, if that's what they want to have, that's for them. So, it's, in, in my opinion, I don't see any problem with putting this there. I understand that there are a couple residences that back up to there, but it's not Zone R1, so, you know, the expectation isn't really there for that. So, I would support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you. I too would support this. I think, I like the father-son business going on, too. But no, I do, I agree with Councilmember Carlyle, the houses being rentals, that they, they will know what they're getting into. And again, it's just a year, and if things don't go well, then we'll reevaluate, but I hope it goes well for you.
Thank you. I can support this, too. I just think, Mr. Soto, that we need to, your staff needs to have conversations internally, and we start preparing for moments like this as far as, I know you have in the past years, but I don't, like you said, food trucks haven't really come up much in the last few years, have they? At least not to us. They've, maybe to you guys they do.
Not in the downtown, no.
Yeah. So, with Green Street coming, the, that Green Street, the project, we just probably need to firm up other regs and rules for the food trucks, or revisit them and make sure that what you want is a staff, because we do want to support you. But this one, with the way they positioned it, and the, and the, you know, the CBD zoning, the business district zoning, and, you know, I, I think they're probably going to get an approval, so, because I'm not seeing any more comments. So, with that said, I'm going to ask council if somebody would like to make a motion, as you see on your screen, or a variant, you know, any kind of variance or modification of it. Buddy? Councilmember Rader's chimed in. Councilmember Rader?
I move to approve the special event permit appeal to allow a food truck to operate at 110 Southeast Fourth Street during the following days and hours of operation as requested, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM Sunday through Saturday, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Sunday through Wednesday, and 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM Thursday through Saturday.
Second?
You have a motion to adopt the, actually, the exact statement on the screen before you, special event permit appeal by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Carlyle. Discussion. Do our businesses, they, I can't believe I'm asking this, as Mayor, I'm showing, I don't know, something here that I should know, but what time do our businesses close downtown?
Varies.
What time do they have to close? 1:30? Okay. That's why I thought this was two. Okay. So, enough for them to leave and get a pizza? Okay, I've got a motion on the floor and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. It does approve, it is approved unanimously. Mr. Soto, good job on this. I know it's, you guys have to do your job, but you, you gave it straight, and we were able to even have a motion in front of us just in case, so thank you for that. And thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Okay, next would be public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, the Clerk's office is not aware of any public comments.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution. Ms. Lombardo, would you please read the Resolution 25? Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
Good job, good job.
Well, we were talking about, we were talking about, you know, trash in an alley. What about trash?
Talking about trash.
And all of our other parts of the community. We have a presentation on solid waste services. Mr. Michael Park, looks like he's taking the lead, but I bet we hear from Mr. Elam as well at some point.
Maybe, maybe not. We'll see.
Okay. So, set it up. Look what she's got ready. Show them.
Got your flag ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's ready.
Well, good evening. Michael Park, Director of Public Works, here to discuss solid waste. Really a continuation of our last conversation, which was a very high-level review of all of the four priority goals the City Council set in its retreat prior to the end of last year. Our intent is to really review what's been done, what's changed, what is our goal with regard to solid waste, and then what's next. So, at the retreat, we heard, obviously, solid waste is a priority goal. We heard from a number of you in the conversation, some more eager and ready to go right now and start that process, moving from subscription-based service to contract-based service. Some refer to it as like single hauler, but those are the two different models of solid waste services. In our community, we are a subscription-based service with over a dozen different private haulers that any resident can contract on their own, and pick and choose, and move on to a different one if they're unhappy. But we didn't hear from the full council at that retreat. Was a unified decision on how we were going to move forward, if we were going to move forward on this particular initiative. Then we had our kind of high-level conversation about a month ago, and was directed to come back to the full council to have this discussion. I also just kind of remind you, this is in line with our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan, to have this conversation about solid waste. It touches on a number of our critical success factors or key elements of these plans. So, looking back historically on solid waste and contract hauling in particular, I'll spend most of my time talking about the more recent initiative from 2006, which concluded around 2012, 2011. But actually, there was a, a similar initiative just prior to that, from the mid-'90s up until about 2000, 2001. Both the latter and the former had similar initiatives. We, we had concern over landfill capacity. We had a driver of needing to increase our recycling, more diversion to extend our capacity of our landfill. We had been talking about, what do we do when our landfill closes? How do we extend the life of our landfill? These were the motivations for the conversations the last two cycles we had done this. And really, recycling was the main thing. How do we bundle recycling to increase our recycling rates from what was at that time about 6% participation in our community, to get closer to what is the state goal of 40%, or some of our peers that are ranging anywhere from 30% to 60% recycling participation? The first time we went through this, we got an ordinance that required haulers to offer recycling, but it didn't mandate recycling. The first time ended kind of around 2000, where there was a concern over process. And then we had strategic planning efforts that engaged. We had Citizen Task Force for solid waste that were engaged. Those task force were made up of haulers, people in the solid waste industry, council members, staff, consultants, community members from HOA, so it was a very robust group. That really led to recommending the outcome of 2010, 11, and in support of the LS 360 strategic plan around that timeframe. So, if you're following me, you understand what the motivations were, what were the drivers of that initiative at that time. The solid waste management task force had developed a series of recommendations with City Council concurrence. Council then, as I'll move along here, had some public engagement before deciding to reissue, and it was kind of a continuous two-year notice that was ongoing with those solid waste discussions. Right around March of 2010, City Council decided, yes, go forward with that next two-year notification period. So, there wasn't really a gap in those. They just kept renewing over and over. And that two-year notice period says, okay, you can work through this process in two years, then you can start that contractual service. But if you go beyond three years, you need to start over again with re-noticing, okay? At that time, we worked with the solid waste committee of City Council. I think it was the same committee as Public Works Committee. They met at the same time. Through a series of seven meetings, every month they were meeting, they were working with solid waste task force, with staff, addressing all the issues that go into an RFP for contractual services for solid waste residential. We're just talking residential services, not commercial. We had to define what is a residential service, so it's not apartments. We decided at that time would be, you know, anything of a fourplex or less would qualify as, as a residential service. Had to talk things about zones, were we going to do containers or bags? I mean, they worked through a lot of different issues over that period of time. They concluded their recommendations after having four public meetings. They had a public meeting within each council district, and then presented their recommendation to the City Council in 2011. City Council at that time gave a split vote in favor of moving forward with the RFP as 5-3, and we probably learned a little bit from that lesson, and we, lesson learned is I think we need more support, one way or the other. Having a split vote probably put us at a disadvantage to begin with. That RFP was issued. There was an addenda managed, and then, as we anticipated, a lot of opposition, and the process stopped when the city received an injunction. There were probably four key points to that, that I think City Council considered fully and ended the process at that time. Did not renew the two-year notice period, and so we have been going for several years now without any notice. We'll have to start that over. We never really got to the entire public education, prepare and implement program stage, because we never opened bids. We never moved forward with the process. There was some public education in the public meetings and talking with HOAs and obviously the task force all along the way, as we rendered all the criteria of what that RFP would be. So, the previous recommendations were on the basis of a strategic plan and the citizen and council and staff task force. The two-year issue, two-year notice was issued as a renewing notice. The RFP was issued by council, as I said, by a 5-3 vote in favor of that issue. We addressed all the scope and services and billing and expectations in that RFP, so a lot of work, if you'd like to look back historically and say, maybe we don't need to reset, a lot of that work has been done. Maybe we need to review that, refresh and update. Additional work was completed, both as we were coming to a conclusion of that initiative and then afterwards, you know, we learned a lot from that experience. We did a lot of legal research. We feel like we were on good, solid footing with whatever action we took, if we wanted to proceed or not. The consultant had completed some service billing assessment to help us frame, how do we want to do billing, what would be the cost alternatives of different strategies in managing a contract. Like I said, some lessons learned there is expect that opposition to be there. Opposition from residents, opposition from small haulers, opposition from large haulers, surprisingly, and I think that's what we learned most, is that trash is a very personal thing, and it's a big business. We also understand and lessons learned, as I will continue to reiterate, we need a council that is committed to this, one way or the other. Either we're going to proceed or we're not, but we need commitment. As you saw, this is at least a two-year process. That commitment needs to last longer than what just this current sitting dais is. It will go past another election period. So, what's changed? I'd say, first of all, leadership has changed. Mayor, council, administration has all changed. I believe that the initiating reasons have also changed. I'm, I'm hearing this coming from your retreat and the feedback, is that this is more of a grassroots community issue, not a, we need to address a landfill capacity problem and recycling. So, to me, that's a big difference in drivers of why we're having this conversation. Our landfill is closed. That, that's a big change from then to now. Last time, one of those key issues in the injunction was flow control. We were managing where the waste was going, and we had a contract out at our landfill, and that was another point of concern, was was that contractor at an advantage, competitive advantage to the competing bids. So, two of those issues are done, because we don't have a landfill anymore that we're operating. I think subscription prices have increased significantly. When I went back and looked at what were, what was the environment like just 15 years ago when we were having this conversation, and prices were in that $12 to $14 a month range for subscription prices. I believe they're much higher today, much higher, probably double or even triple that is, from what I understand. And, and we know that there's been more littering, that's been a concern about all the number of waste haulers and what they're doing around town and some of those uncovered loads, it's contributing towards litter, and that our two-year notice has also lapsed. That was probably the third point that I hadn't mentioned yet in that injunction, is that they didn't take our notice serious, because it was just continuous. Here, we've had a clean break for a number of years. If we were to issue another two-year notice, I think it indicates some seriousness to the effort. What hasn't changed is, I think, resident support in the community. While there's opposition, there's clearly still resident support for contracted services and staff support, as you'll see all the pros, cons, or opportunities and concerns, why we have that support and moving in that direction. There's still going to be opposition, you know, in the community and in the business. What also hasn't changed is we look back 15 years ago today, still a majority of communities, at least on the Missouri side, contract trash service, 67%. That seems to be the norm. When I looked at the Kansas side, it's probably fairly similar. When I went through 17 communities, it was at that exact same kind of 65 to 70% contract service.
Can you, can you put it in layman's terms, contract service?
So, easier way to put this is 33% of the communities out there on the Jackson Clay Cass side of the state line do what we do. They, they leave it up to the residents to subscribe service of their choice, and they- They leave it up to the residents to subscribe service of their choice, and the 67% rely on their municipality contract that service for them.
So 2/3 of the communities have some form of contract servicing?
Correct.
Okay.
What's not changed is still, we got a regional landfill capacity issue. No longer do we have a local landfill open, but regionally, I think we went through this last year when we were talking about a South Casey landfill proposal. Everybody agreed we still have a landfill issue in the region. I think what also hasn't changed is we still have recycling rates that are relatively low in Lee Summit, especially compared to our other communities in our metropolitan area. And we're certainly far from reaching what that state goal is of 40%. And then, I think-
Again, I'm sorry, but terminology-wise, recycling rates?
Yeah, participation rates. So if at your house you have a recycling bed-
Because when you say rates, it sounds like you're talking about the cost of recycling.
No, just engagement.
All right.
And then, as we'll go through next, I don't think very many of our pros, cons, or is we'll put them, opportunities and concerns have changed. They're pretty much the same as they were 15 years ago. Some of those concerns are obviously residents will lose a choice of hauler. Another concern is that it will limit the number of residential haulers operating in Lee Summit. These concerns come from different positions. You know, if you're a hauler, that's a concern. Increased resources need for contract oversight, bill management and resources that we're going to have to undertake as a city to manage a contract. Expanding city customer services support that goes into what that oversight is, customer services and relations. And I think it's still a concern to expect hauler, resident opposition, legal challenges, whether or not it could be a concern, but again, we'll be doing this during another Some of the opportunities, I think we have an opportunity to align our community with the norms when we talk about 67% of some of other communities are doing something different. We get a lot of residents who move into our community and they call up, when's my trash day? Well, who do you have for trash hauler? They come to our community expecting that kind of answer, that kind of service. I think we can expect probably a more professional, uniformed community trash service. Reduce costs for service for residents. I don't know what everybody is paying, so I can't guarantee that the prices will go down for everyone. But looking at other contracts through these other communities, they're in the range of $18 to $22 per month right now. That's what their residents are paying for service. I would bet most people in our community are paying a lot more than that. So I would say generally, you could see a reduced cost in service. Diminishing pavement damages and road repair costs. We've estimated that we could see an annual savings conservatively of a million dollars in just our overlay, our slurry, our pavement management programs. If you think what that million dollars means in the context of our capital improvement payment management programs, that's basically skipping every fifth year. That allows an extra fifth of our roads to be addressed by just that million dollars and reduce damages because trash haulers do a tremendous amount of damage, especially to our local roads. Increase hauler efficiencies. I think that's a real opportunity that, you know, you get a hauler who's servicing a larger area, they have more efficiencies. And with that, I think, you know, this is, this goes to the number of haulers and what they can rely on fiscal sustainability, what level of investment they can put into their fleet and their resources is a real opportunity for them. I know this was a concern, but it is also an opportunity to limit the number of residential haulers operating in Lee Summit. Again, it's perspective. I think you had talked to a number of our residents who would like to see that as a positive impact to limit the number of haulers that are driving up and down their neighborhoods. Reduce noise, less fuel, less emissions, improve neighborhood aesthetics and uniformity. Again, safety from fewer trucks. The fewer number of trucks, the safer your neighborhood environment's going to be. Better customer services because the city will have an opportunity to assist in those customer services and engagements. Guaranteed service for all residents. And I think this is a big one because right now, there is no guarantee you as a resident get service. You could contact all 14 haulers and they could all deny you service. Under a contracted service, we assure every resident has residential trash service. Additional recycling and service option opportunities that we saw in the last RFP, there was very specific intent to provide options to our residents to contract those services that may not otherwise be available to them. Increase waste collections accountability and transparency, some more environmental improvements, air quality. You have hauler financial reliability. That's what I was talking about, where if you've got a hauler who's now under contract with the city for a four-year term or five-year term, as it was decided in the last RFP, there's some assurance that they're going to be able to make money and reinvest in that. Conditional covered load and litter enforcement fines, if we're under contract with that hauler, I think we have more opportunity for regulatory oversight of that contract and their performance. We have more opportunity to do environmental programs and public education with regard to solid waste and littering. And then lastly, this might be a minor point, but if we have a contractor, solid waste contractor under contract and we're in a situation of debris management, perhaps they could provide some assistance. At least, there might be an opportunity for that. So that's a review of kind of the concerns and opportunities, as well as some history. What I'd like to have is a little more conversation with you about what is the goal of potentially either staying with subscription-based services, that's the choose-your-hauler, or contract-based services where the city contracts for a single hauler or multiple haulers under a zoned situation? What are we trying to accomplish? Who do we engage in this process? How and when do we engage them? And I've got a couple more slides that looks at the timeline moving forward, as well as some decision points. You know, do we have a public meeting where we get some feedback before we issue that two-year notice? You don't have to. You can just use a two-year notice. And then, do you want to have engagement? Who do you want to engage and how? Where do you want to send this to work on? To either review past RFP conditions, update those, or have whole new conversations? So when do we want this to finish? Like, what is, where's the finish line and what do we think success looks like?
Are you queuing me up?
Queuing you up? I'll leave it on this slide so, because there's a couple of questions there that maybe can help the discussion. Again, are we going to issue two-year notice? What do we want to do before that? Perhaps anything after that? How do we want to develop that scope? Who do we want to engage? When do we want to engage them?
Okay, so, did you say 1 million in savings on the roads per year?
Per year.
Okay. And then, before we keep going, can you, you really went over it quickly. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get in the weeds, but you went over, you just said the very last bullet point was debris management.
Yeah, and this is the time to get in the weeds.
Okay, good, because I'm ready to talk about debris management.
We're ready to talk.
Because when you say, when you say that, man, my head kind of like explodes with ideas, but go ahead.
So yeah, and this is the time to talk. We were directed last time kind of full council so that everybody feels informed that we can start making decisions. Debris management, imagine we had a microburst and you have debris or tornado or hit, you have debris, you have roadside. Normally, we would contract some assistance there. I don't know that a hauler necessarily has that expertise, but they might provide some more immediate response if we needed something or some ladder event cleanup assistance. They, obviously, they're solid waste business. They could have those resources. That's what I mean by debris management.
Okay, so let me ask you a question, Mr. Park. When we have a homeowner in our community that doesn't mow their lawn and it gets to be 18 inches high, and the neighbor calls the city and says, hey, they're 18 inches high, we give them a notice, and eventually, if they don't mow that lawn, we go and mow it for them. And then we bill them. Because, you know, something has to be done, and that's what, that's our policy. But we have mowers, right? So when you talk about debris management, when somebody has a whole lot of trash, let's just say at a commercial property, let's not pick on the residents this time, at a commercial property that's not being used or something, and it keeps getting used as a dump site, because that happens with vacant properties, eventually, if that owner of that property doesn't do that, then we probably have to go over and clean that up and then bill them. Is that correct?
Correct. Neighborhood services typically has contract, even for the mowing side and for if you've got some property maintenance code issue where they need to clean up that kind of debris, they would contract that out.
And so, so do we have-
This could be an opportunity if they offered these services.
Okay, so you could, but we don't have dump trucks, or we don't have, you know, trash trucks.
We don't have trash trucks.
So we have to contract it out at this time?
We have to.
Okay. So you could say, you'd say we could incorporate that into something like, into this contract if we're calculated and-
Yeah, if we're calculating, this is something, is an opportunity, we want to try to take advantage, perhaps you issue an RFP, for example, that has some optional services that aren't required for a contractor bid on, but maybe they want to, so that you have a contract ready to go to deploy to a property that needs some additional cleanup.
Okay. I see that as a big opportunity, but I'm going to turn it over to council. Council member Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. So at our retreat, I was actually in this little group. I don't remember who I was there, but I know me and council member Hodges were in it. And I remember saying, look, the community is upset about trash a lot. We do need to do something, but do we know what we need to do? No. So in my mind, I, and I think I said this then, if we could get this two-year clock started, because nobody's going to come tell us how they feel until they feel like we're going to do something about it, right? And so if we can get this two-year clock started, I think that really starts the engagement because you're either going to scare people or they're going to love it, right? But they're going to tell us either way. So in my mind, starting the two-year clock gets engagement going, and then we can review what we did in the past. You know, what does the RFP look like? Is it still, still what we want to do, or do we need to make changes to it? And how, back then, did we think we were going to go about billing? And how many people does that look like? And what does that look like financially for Lee Summit? And are we going to be able to recoup the money? Or how does this work? Or is this just another addition? All of those things. But I think all of those things come after we start the clock because I don't think anybody's going to take us serious until we do something. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know I personally get a lot of phone calls of people asking, like, why don't you guys do a large trash pickup day? The city I used to live in did a large trash pickup day. So I feel like that's kind of what a lot of people that move here, that's kind of what they expect, because like you said, it's almost 70% of surrounding communities in Kansas and Missouri that already do that. I do feel like it's important, one thing that we did discuss was maybe prioritizing locally-owned companies over the big national trash companies. I feel like that is something that I would like to stay with and see done, just because, well, I know from experience, the big trash companies just aren't responsive. And the smaller locally-owned ones feel like they're a little more responsive. Plus, I would hate to put anyone like out of business by doing this. But, and then, so I'm going through the questions. Who do we engage? Like, what do you mean by who do we engage?
Well, like, last time, we had a citizen group that had some HOA representation. They had, I think, waste management, one of the larger solid waste haulers was involved. We had, I think, city scrap was involved. We had a consultant that was involved. So you can form this task force if that's the direction you want to go to have that kind of engagement. You could have more engagement from more residents if you don't feel like there was enough in the last task force, just so that you're hearing the community in all perspectives as you develop the conditions for a contract, if you want to pursue a contract.
Okay. I mean, I think it's super important that the residents are engaged, for sure. But I, so I live downtown. I don't have an HOA. And I know from experience, the trash companies, I don't know if I'm even allowed to name them, but GFL specifically, they are terrible. They speed so fast. I have probably nine or 10 trash companies throughout the week that go up and down my street. One company in particular puts their backs all the way up down my street because they don't want to go all the way around the block. So I know how bad they are. They drive through people's yards. They're just, they're just not good. So I would, I'm excited for this to continue. But, and then, what does success look like? Like, I feel like going with a local trash hauler, so I guess, when you say like throughout the whole city, is it just, what, because didn't, at one point, somebody talked about like dividing it up, like one trash hauler couldn't-
So it can be. You can design this a number of ways. I'll say the last RFP ended up with a recommendation supported by the council at that time of two zones. Basically, splitting the community, they felt like it gave opportunity for multiple haulers. It also gave a backup if you were unsatisfied with the performance of a hauler, that you had another contract to rely on to continue service uninterrupted. That's where they came from. There was concern that one zone was just too large, didn't allow for any backup or competition, and that more than two zones started to chop it up too small. Because whatever the proposal is, the pricing has to be the same. So you could be a resident up north or a resident down south, you're paying the same for your options. You know, we, the last RFP gave three different container options that you could choose from, different pricing models, different, you know, things you could sign up and do. So that was their thought at that time. Not to say that was right or wrong, but you can design it in a number of ways.
And that would be kind of, the task force would kind of tackle that if that's the direction we choose to go?
Last time, I said, we had monthly meetings with Public Works Committee effectively and staff, and staff was also engaging a task force to develop all of those recommendations and kind of vet them out. And I'd say you're not uncommon when you say you're not in an HOA, or I think over 80% of our residents are not in an HOA that contracts service or a HOA period, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm sure we'll come back to the whole local versus large, and we can get into that detail, but we probably need to not mention names as far as that goes. I mean, just want to like help us, I don't want to, I don't want people coming in right away. I want to talk about this first.
You don't want to knock them down?
Council member Funk.
Thank you, Mayor. So you, Michael, you had one, you got one of my questions with council member Pryor. So you think there's 80% of the city that doesn't have an HOA, that doesn't have contracted trash service?
I believe you worded it correctly. I know most of our residents are not in an HOA, and then probably a majority of our HOAs do not contract service. I don't think Lakewood contracts trash service. Rain Tree does not contract, and they're the largest of our probably two HOAs. And so when you think about our population, how many of them are served by an HOA that contracts? It's very, very few.
Wow. So you said a million dollars a year in savings on our roads. Have we done any type of calculations on what's it going to cost to add customer service people?
Well, that was done previously in that cost assessment, that financial assessment that I referred to in the billing. If I recall right, the RFP last time said the haulers would be responsible for the billing, whoever we contract with, and then we would hire a person or two to help manage the customer service side and contract administration. I don't anticipate it to be an enormous cost. We're not going to add, you know, a dozen people to staff. You're talking a couple of people at most. And try to also look within staff to say, who do we already have who has capacity to handle these kind of contractual oversights? Now, that was a decision in that RFP. Of course, it would take a lot more resource if we want to handle billing directly, and that was decided against last time.
I think customer service would be a lot. You mentioned in the containers, would that be something we would brand ourselves, or would we go to the haulers?
That would normally be haulers. We would dictate the dimensions or sizes of the container options, and then in their RFP, they would propose what they're able to provide, and I'm sure they would want to keep their brand because their contract is for a certain term, and then perhaps they succeed in the next term or not.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Hodges.
Thank you. So I guess I'm still trying to understand the percentages you gave. Were you saying that basically 20% of all neighborhoods in Lee Summit have an HOA? Or only those ones, or they, only the HOAs?
Yeah, I'm not saying that. There's a higher percentage of neighborhoods that have HOAs.
They just don't contract out the trash?
They don't contract, like Winsboro does not contract.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. Okay, that's good to know. So I know you mentioned, you know, we could do community engagement before, two-year notice after. I guess I'm good either way, but I do want to make sure we have lots of community engagement. Like, I want the task force, I want, I think it'd be great to have surveys, and I think it'd be great to actually mail out surveys because this is something that's going to impact everybody, just so we know that it's getting to people, not just relying on Facebook or whatever. And then, so is there a way, or- so is there a way, or I guess I don't know how this works. So you said that you couldn't guarantee that everybody would be paying less, which that makes sense. But is there a way that we could be transparent with what it will look like in, in the, in the grand scheme of things? How much per household will have to pay so that way they know kind of what they're signing up for?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that is something that we will have available?
Yeah, yeah, I think we can provide comparator information for those cities that contract on what, what choice maybe in a scale of options. As well as, we can do more research to find out how much our current residents are paying. You know, I've heard anywhere from $70 a month, more commonly kind of getting that $30 to $40 a month. And I just say, I can't guarantee it because I don't know what everybody pays. You know, somebody might be in an HOA that contracts and they're still paying a $20 a month rate.
Okay. And then, um, I think, I think where I'm mainly struggled is because I like, my HOA does do it, however small we are, but we do do it. And I'm thankful that they, I was a little leery when they changed over from us doing ourselves to going with HOA contract because I didn't want to lose my service with who we had it with. Because we'd had one, it was horrible service, we got one, it was just great. So I think of that in the grand scheme of things as far as, okay, we go to the city-based. If I have an issue, whereas if it's with my HOA and I have an issue, just me and a few neighbors need to go to our HOA president and say, hey, here's the deal. And we can most likely get it changed. It's going to take a lot bigger percentage. If I'm over here struggling with some trash and maybe other side isn't as much or whatever, it's going to take a lot more work and a lot more people to actually create change. Um, and I, I don't know, it will probably almost feel overwhelming to residents, I feel like. Is that accurate? Or, I mean?
I, I don't know that I can say that for sure either, because we will have a contractual relationship with the contractor to, to deliver on that service. And I think they would be responsible for that first point of customer service, but the city is there as a backstop. You know, you're not happy with the customer service you got in response. You call the city, and it's our customer service then that starts to leverage the contract to get what we want. And, and the penalty could be fines, but it could also just be that you don't get to do work here again. And, and that's big business, and that's a big loss.
Okay. So what does it look like for possibly HOA? And I know you said the HOA rate is low right now. But kind of to council member Carlisle's point of, you know, letting people know, and then when people feel like it's actually going to turn into something, they'll become more activated and engaged with this topic. So, I mean?
Yeah, HOAs was probably, it, it was the fourth issue in a four of four injunction notes, was how HOA contracts were handled. And that was probably what we talked about most last time with the Public Works Solid Waste Committee. And the recommendations was how do you do that? Do they, do they have an opt-out at the beginning, so long as they're meeting the minimum terms of service that the city contracts? Do you allow them to come in later? All that kind of falls apart, though, when you contract service, if you've got everybody else kind of doing their own thing. And so that's probably something that's going to need a lot of conversation with you all as we define the terms and the plan of a solid waste service contract.
Okay, so could it be something to where, is it like an all or nothing? All the city does it, or it's just not going to happen? Or could it maybe turn into something to where HOAs, and maybe when this topic comes up, maybe more HOAs will become more active as far as doing trash service for their HOA? So maybe having non-HOA communities, like their option is the city service? If you, if you have an HOA that takes care of it, you can stick with that?
Um, I think we just need to have a lot more conversation about that particular topic. And I promise you will get engagement from not only HOA representatives, but contractors. You'll probably find most HOAs are eager to enter, enter into a city contract so they can stop administering it. It's going to be the contractors who don't want to transition away from HOA contracts. And, and there's advantages of both. We, I just would caution, we don't want to have a bunch of HOAs that are accepted out of the city service because then you're going to lose the benefits, the opportunities of scale, of, of a contractor understanding that they get to service half or a quarter or whatever zone you pick for the city. Because that's where their efficiencies come in. You know, if they're working half the city, but you've got to carve out, you know, this HOA, and then this HOA, and this one, they just lose that efficiency in service. And we lose some of really the, the value in like the pavement benefits because now you still have four haulers, five haulers operating all over the same major roadways, even though you may be limited to one in the neighborhood, and then one for the city contract in all the other neighborhoods. Still now, we got two operating in the same major streets that connect those neighborhoods.
All right, last question. So I was trying to read up on other cities who do this. But I know one of the major complaints, and maybe is here too, is trash trucks, the, the trash falling out of the trash trucks. And so how would going to one trash service eliminate that? Because again, I mean, we can chalk it up, they could say, well, it's not from us, just like I'm sure a lot of them do now, say it might be from somebody else. But how, how would that truly eliminate that?
That's tough, and it wasn't really discussed last time we developed an RFP. The covered load issue or uncovered load issue wasn't addressed. And there is, we would have to try to be creative as an opportunity. Can we build that into the contract where if our law enforcement sees this happening from one of the cities contracted vendors for a trash service, perhaps the contract has penalties built in and we're not relying on the state statutes, which really lack enforcement for covered loads.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Raider.
Thanks, Mayor. I think I just have one question, Michael. I think you said two years to, to go through this process to find out. Is there a way to, say we decide that we want to go forward. Is there a way to shorten that timeline? Why is that?
There, there's not.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it just, it means we got a lot of time to work on it, to do public education and engagement over that two-year period. That's a state requirement, state statute.
That's all I had. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pachamlopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, thank you for preparing this. This just won't go away. I know you said a lot has changed since the last time we talked about this. And you had the, the group put together task force. And I know staff has put a lot of time into this throughout the years. I think the fact that it doesn't go away, I think every one of us up here definitely get still calls and emails from residents that are concerned about all the trucks all over town. And I think, whether it was a previous council or this council, I think we still are concerned about the wear and tear of our, on our streets. And whether it's neighborhoods or arterial roads or whatever, commercial areas. I think because of that, I think we do need to look at this again. Um, I think we do need to kick, kick off, kickstart that two-year notice again. But, but I feel like at this time, this go-around, I don't think we have to start from scratch. I think we have a lot of, you all, the staff, and the work that was done by the previous task force has put a lot of good information together that could maybe expedite it so that maybe, I mean, I know you say two years, but maybe it could be expedited somewhat, and, and the, the time period could be a little shorter.
I think what you could probably accelerate and spend more time on is that public engagement. If you recall, you know, when I was looking at the, the last time period, we worked through seven, eight months of RFP development. Basically setting what are the terms and conditions, how is this going to work? Then we went to the public and had our engagements. And then that, that engagement started the RFP process and whatnot. I think you can probably arrive much quicker at what you want this to look like and start engaging the public sooner and have a longer dialogue with them to make sure everybody's comfortable.
Yeah, I would agree. I think, I think we, because of all the background homework that's been done already, we can go to the public and get that engagement quicker. I agree. Um, and then, um, I think just the comments that were made earlier, I, I, I would agree. Council member Hodges' comment, our, our neighborhood made that decision as well to, to go with the subscription-based contractor. And it works really well for our neighborhood, and it is very cost-effective. So if we can look into all those and get into the weeds, I think it'd be good for, for the whole city. So anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you. Council member Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Michael, but I just thought of this. So let's say we do kick this off and we start the two years again. And we're going through the process and we're engaging the public, and we could just get a ton of negative feedback. And so then we, of course, lose council support for this. Can we still do something to where we could limit the days that trash could be picked up in Lee Summit? Like, right now, you get a hauler, whoever you pick, and they just say, well, this is the day we pick up in that neighborhood. But could we not as a city say, okay, trash haulers, these are the two days that you can pick up trash in Lee Summit? Can we do that?
I don't know. I'd have to probably visit with our legal counsel. I know we've restricted the times that they can pick up. They're not able to pick up at 2:00 AM. You know, I think they have to wait till, it's either six or seven in the morning to begin pickups. Seven. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Uh, I don't know, though, whether we can constrain their operation to the extent that we say you can only pick up in Lee Summit on these two days a week. I don't know.
And I really kind of have that same question for, you know, if, if, let's say we do go down this road and people love it and they love the idea of it, and so we do have something going on for residential, but then we still have the commercial. And we have quite a lot of commercial areas in Lee Summit and in every district of Lee Summit. So would we be able to do something to, you know, help limit that as well? It's just the same question, just for commercial over residential. You know, can we say, these are the days you can pick up? And instead of having trucks on every street seven days a week?
So your question's noted, and we'll have to revisit that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Park, how knowledgeable are you about the whole trash? Different companies with regard to all the mergers that have taken place? Like, I mean, it, it's just, it's been a wave of mergers the last five, six years?
You know, when I've looked back over the history of 15, 20 years that solid waste has been an issue, and it, it hasn't gone away. We've seen all kinds of acquisitions, mergers, companies go out of business, new small business startups. It just seems like it's always happening, not just here in Lee Summit, but all over metro area.
Okay, and you're, you know, you, you do the roads all these years. You've been a part of that kind of bidding and such. I know that we, you know, I've been through this a long time with different, or different governmental entities, but there is a way to try to structure it so that you can level the playing field a little bit for the, for the smaller businesses. I know that we can't just say, oh, it's got to be a small business necessarily. But you can do the smaller zone to make it an opportunity because it's too big of a city for some of the smaller. What is, what are the real negatives of dividing it up into not just a couple, but like four to? Like, we got four districts for council members. That's 25,000 people in each, 26,000, whatever it is in each?
Our size probably could divide it into more than just two zones.
And that gives a smaller hauler an opportunity to get one of them. And if one hauler gets three others because they can handle it, then great.
And, and they don't have to be zones of equal size either. I mean, we, we can divide up the lines any way that you prefer. You know, you can make a smaller zone and a large zone, for example. If you think that gets a smaller contractor a better opportunity to compete because their prices are still going to have to compete with, they got to be the same price.
Right, I know, and I think that, I think that we can't control that.
Right.
But what we can do is make our best effort to mitigate for it.
Right.
And rather than wait till, you know, the community tells us that, I'd rather tell them that we're willing to, you know, as we set up these conversations, you actually put it into your presentation that, hey, we could mitigate for, you know, or ruling out all, you know, smaller businesses by having, like you mentioned, a, a smaller zone or however we structure it. So I think it needs to be, it needs to be brought out quickly. Otherwise, boom, there, because I, I, I can see that sentiment. And I think it was a part of what brought this to a screeching halt last time. That's why I'm, that's why I'm talking about it. I think this came to a screeching halt because of that type of, you know?
A, a little bit, Mayor. Again, I think it was the four points that we got the actual injunction noted. Flow control was probably the biggest one. They did not like us dictating where they were taking the trash to our landfill.
Okay.
We don't have a landfill. Two was they felt there was an advantage for our current solid waste contractor operating out at the landfill.
Okay.
Third, as I mentioned, was HOAs, how to deal with HOA contracts. And then fourth was they didn't take the notice serious because it had just been continuing on and on and on. Those were their four points in the letter that they said.
Say the, say the fourth point again, please.
Was with regard to the two-year notice. They didn't believe, at least according to their language, that the notice was serious because the notice didn't have a clear break in time, that it was a continuing reissuance of the two-year notice so that the city could pick up this issue at any time it wanted. Those were the four points. I'm sure there were others.
I totally understand, I totally understand people wanting to have choice. I, I really, that resonates with me personally. So I can understand why citizens want that choice. But I also see, just in today's climate, people want to save money and they want efficiency, and they want the city to step in and help with certain things, like litter and other things that they feel are a part of, you know, everyday life and utilities inside the city limits. And I think we could harness some debris management into the contract language and, and, and just say, we're, we're a city of 107,000 people, and this is what we want. This is what we deserve in a contractor, and this is why we're asking for it. And you're going to have to figure out how to, how to make this happen. But as far as the smaller, the smaller zones, you know, idea to, to open it up for a small business, I, I would also be a proponent for that if that's the way to mitigate for it. If there's another way, Mr. Park, you can educate us and say, well, here's another way to mitigate for only using, you know, the large haulers that can afford to, or that can actually manage this entire city, so.
I think we should wisely do what was done before, and they engaged the haulers in that conversation. I think they're, they're the experts in their industry, and they gave a lot of guidance to that solid waste task force with regard to how the zones might be set up. And I would, I would suggest that we do something similar as we work through this process if you're inclined to direct us to continue towards contract-based services.
Okay, well, I do think that there's always going to be people that do have strong opinions on this, that might be in opposition. But, you know, the one thing I've learned up here is that if you just keep talking and trying to mitigate for what it is they're talking about, you can usually, you can usually, we can't, can't make everybody happy, but we can solve for a lot of problems. And so I do like the idea of engaging them, you know, longer and, and more to try to, to do so. But I also think sometimes it helps to just bring up the issues and queue them up so that they can not just tell you how they're feeling, but literally ask them the questions. You know, is this a concern? Because it's going to kind of come up sooner or later. You got, you guys know. Okay, so I've got one more council member wants to comment or discuss. But then I want to get back to wrapping this up with the, these questions here that you have. So, council member Pryor?
Thank you. So you mentioned essentially 70% of surrounding cities already do this. Have any of these, any of the cities just recently gone to this, or have they all pretty much?
Same ones. It's 15 years ago. They've been doing it for a while.
Okay, thank you.
So the question is, contract-based services or subscription-based? There seems to be a lot of sentiment up here to go with the contract-based. I want to make sure everybody understands terminology, which is the city would be involved in putting out an RFP for a single hauler, or it could be multiple zones, but single hauler service. Subscription is when we just allow everybody to do whatever they want and end up with trash trucks everywhere. So I think there's, um, this up here that we want to keep having this conversation and take the next steps. So what are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to accomplish direction, a vision. So we need to, I, I've seen in all of your conversations, Mr. Park, you're saying, you always end it with saying, we need a commitment from the council. Like, we get it, maybe I need to just like really state it clearly for the council. We have to move forward and not change our mind to the last second because one person walks in here and is upset because that's going to happen. That, is that?
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
And it might be a group of people that rally together. But then we have to decide if 107,000, 106,000 other people, if it's, if it's, if it's best for all. And then what is it really that these people are upset about? Have we tried and have we engaged and have we tried to mitigate for what their, what their issues are?
Correct, Mayor. I, I think the drivers of this conversation are very different than they were 15 years ago, as I said. We're hearing from residents, cost concerns, trash, litter. Before, it was landfill capacity concerns. Before, it was landfill capacity concerns, how can we extend the life of our landfill? How can we increase recycling rates, participation, not price, to extend our, our landfill life? Very different conversations coming from very different points. And that, to your point, yes, commitment is what we're looking for because I think even at a five-three vote we had last time, and at that time mayors didn't vote, they were just a tiebreaker, we, we were already working from a disadvantage. And because those weren't just three no-vo's, so those were three very much strong oppositions working the community against the initiative. And if we're from that point, I, I don't think we'll succeed.
Okay. I don't think you have that right now. I think we've got pretty general openness to the direction, but we just want to know that the city's going to, that you all as staff are going to help truly engage the citizens in a very genuine, sincere, open, transparent way and address the elephants in the room up front so that we don't get surprises, you know, a year and a half from now. And you're asking us to know that we have to trust, trust not only ourselves, but the next council to finish this, which is pretty much the case all the time. But you're saying that this one has the, I would say, has this, this whole concept has the ability to turn on a dime because it's, it's just a little bit more emotional, it's a little bit more personal, it's, it's our trash, you know?
Correct.
So when you say, how do we, who do we engage, how and when do we engage? I heard Councilmember Carlisle say she wants to get the two-year thing started. We can engage right now, but she wants to get it started. Are you, what is your, how do you respond to that? Do you say, "Yeah, that's fine, we can get started with the two-year"? What do you call it, two-year what?
It's a two-year notice. It's an official notice we give out to every one of the haulers. My read is that I, I think that there is general support to move forward, and I feel like you have a pretty good understanding of the history and know what to expect in opposition. So you're going into this with full knowledge of what's going to come out of it. I think Councilmember Carlisle's right, the notice is going to get their attention. And to try to have an engagement before giving a notice, I don't know that you're going to have their attention.
Right, right. So we give notice, and then we say, "Oh, here's a notice." And then pretty quickly thereafter, we say, "And we're here to engage, so let's have this type of meeting." What do we call these? Not a town hall, but something where they come and engage, like a neighborhood services meeting, like a neighborhood meeting that a developer would have, basically. What do you call those types of meetings?
Neighborhood meetings.
Okay. Stakeholder meetings.
Stakeholder meetings.
It's going to be not just, it's not just going to be residents, it's going to be business owners because not all business owners live here. It's going to be property owners that might not live here, but have property here. I mean, we've got to find a way to get to all of them, I heard survey. But we need to see, I think it's time we see that plan and then say, "If we do all of these things, and this is how we're going to engage after we give the notice, is this a good plan, council?" And then, and then we give you the blessing to go forward, or here's some ideas of how we can engage even more. And then, and then we can go forward from there.
So you'd like staff to present the, the engagement plan to the full council?
Yes.
Did I hear, though, we may be ready to issue the two-year notice now, and then staff present that engagement plan?
I, I am fine with the two-year notice now, but I really, I know how this goes. I would rather to see the engagement plan and say, "Here's what we'll do after we give the notice." That's, that's what I would rather. I know you might feel differently. What do you think?
I think, I mean, I think having a plan is always a good thing.
Okay.
And yeah, so yeah, I think we could come back and you could say, "This is our plan for engagement of the community. We're not really looking at, at businesses in this per se because we're not talking about commercial, only residential, so."
Oh, that's true.
I would, you know.
We're only talking about residential.
Only residential.
This is, this is our community plan.
You're supposed to correct me when I say wrong things.
I'm here for that.
Okay, yes, you are.
So, but in that, I think, you know, I think the HOAs that we do have, that's a great choice or a great chance for community engagement. You know, we could put it through the chamber and talk to the chamber members about it. Most of them live here, you know, through the rest of our community partners, have meetings like that, downtown Lee Summit, so on and so forth. I mean, we could just list them out forever. But also, the meetings that we have in our districts, you know, we can hold those and just say that we're, this is one of the main topics we're going to talk about.
I do think.
Having that plan, I think, is great. And then as soon as they get the plan through the two-year thing.
If we're going to talk to them, like Councilmember Carlisle's saying, your, your strengths and weaknesses or opportunities and, what'd you call the?
Concerns.
Concerns? You're, we can use those in the, in the district meetings. You, we take them, we take your bullet points that you've provided. And I think, you know, we have enough conversations up here on the dais, we can actually hold our own with regard to, you know, those opportunities and concerns and see, you know, see what, what our citizens think, yeah, the community. Go ahead, Councilmember.
No, that's, I just think coming forward with that plan is, is fantastic. But you, I think you can bring the two-year notice at the same time.
I think maybe an approach we could take is we'll find on a near upcoming council agenda, we'll present the plan as well as perhaps a motion where we can actually get a vote on the two-year notice and get that, that commitment publicly.
I think so.
Okay.
And what, no, go back.
I'm sorry.
All right. When do we want to finish? Yes, two years.
I heard as soon as we can, which is two years.
And then what does success look like? Okay, that's a good one.
Everybody's.
Well, we save people a bunch of money. Or saving a bunch of money on the roads. We're, we are going to have a cleaner city. If we, if you, sir, could go ahead and think about KPI, key performance indexes as far as what success looks like with regard to what can we look at now and then look at later? And, and, yeah, measure, to measure this and just say, and it doesn't have to be a ton, Mr. Park, just, just enough that we have bullet points later on. I do, I do want to talk more, and maybe I'll try to put some of my thoughts, write them out with regard to those debris management issues because, like, I know we're constrained as a, as a city by what we can and can't do, but if we're going to harness and leverage our, our ability in this situation to negotiate a good deal, I want to be able to, I want to be able to call their emergency team. You know, I know that when we do snowplowing, we have, I talked to Mr. Dunning recently about, "Do we have, like, an emergency team that goes out for the hotspots?" And he's like, "Yes, we do have an emergency team." I'm like, "Okay, well, with a trash company, I want, I want something in place where we can call and say, 'Hey, listen, we've got a mess over here, and this is, this was part of our contract with you, and this is what we need done.'" Or maybe we just plan it out and just say, you know, twice a year, "Here's some services we, we want included in this, and we want you to perform these under the contract." Anything to help with litter and beautification is what I'm thinking. But I know, I know that's a little bit of a stretch, but, Mr. Dunning, I mean, you just take two problems and you kind of smash them together and, yeah, yeah, so. So if you could help us kind of figure out what, what, how to measure success, that would be really great, Mr. Park. All right. Now you can go to the next slide.
This is just looking at what you kind of said, you want a two-year timeline. We'll bring back a engagement plan for your consideration before making a vote on issuing the two-year notice. I think you've answered some of the questions there, at least enough for us to get to that point. And then after that engagement plan, which will lay out where does it go next and who are we engaging, I think we'll get your concurrence or revision to that plan at that time.
Okay. How did we do?
Did great. I'm not even sure I need to go through a recap of history of what we've all agreed, because I just did that.
Okay. Mr. Dunning, how'd we do? All right. On them big rocks, we're talking about.
Good job getting in the details.
And we, and you didn't even need Elam. You didn't even, you didn't even need him.
Is he still left out over there? No, he's, he's good to go? No, that, that's when you got in the weeds, good job. That's good, I know.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good job. Where are we? Resolution, now I can go to the resolution for Ms. Lombardo to read for us.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution establishing a procedure for appointing members of the 2026 Charter Review Commission for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right. Hopefully you all did your homework and you read up on this. I think it's pretty much the same process as last time, isn't it, Mr. Head?
That's correct, Mayor. The only thing that is a little bit different about this process is that it is sort of an accelerated process where the last, the last time we did this, we were doing appointments in, say, November in that timeframe. Under this process, the council will be taking up those appointments in September. So a little bit earlier, you're avoiding the holidays, and then right after, at the beginning of the new year, the commission will start to meet.
Very good. And if it's going to require the council appoint, nominate people, but also work together to try to nominate someone. So you, you council members got to work together in your districts. So we're putting you to work right away, Mr. Funk. Yep. All right. Discussion on this. All right, not seeing any. Please cast your vote. I'm sorry, the motion was by, was, was moved by Councilmember Hodges and seconded by Councilmember Carlisle after the, after our city clerk read it, so. Please record the vote. And it does pass seven-zero unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, next is the emergency ordinance that, no, we removed that from the agenda. So now we're going to go to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Before we read this, Mr. Head, do we need to read the bill or can I just say now that we, we have a substitute? Go ahead, sir.
At this point, Mayor, I think it's appropriate for you to just simply declare that there's a substitute that has been provided to each of the council members. And then it will need to be introduced, so someone will need to either read the substitute or the original. Now, the caption is precisely the same, but when you, when whoever is going to read this in wants to, would need to clear, make sure that we were reading the substitute. The only difference with the substitute versus what you had previously in your agenda is in subsection B, the, the language that there is, is there in bold states that, essentially that the, the succession for mayor's authority, oh. Succession for mayor's authority will go, of course, to the mayor pro tem first, that's provided by charter, and then it will follow this order of committees. But only until such time as the council will convene then and can select a mayor from among the remaining number of council members. So generally, that would be a fairly short time. It ensures that we don't have any gaps in, in the event of an emergency situation. But here is that language.
Okay. All right. This went through rules, didn't it?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, a few times. So I appreciate all the work Rules did on this, because I know that you've had to discuss it a quite a few times, like you said, so. Okay, any questions? Anybody from Mr. Head? You have a question? Yes.
Yes, yes, Mayor. So, so, Mr. Head, do you want, I'm supposed to read this. So do you want me to add in that language then when I read it, or just read the substitute bill that?
Just, just read it as you normally would, but instead of saying, "I, I move for, I move for second reading of", make sure you read, "I move for second reading of substitute bill number," so that we're clear as to which bill you're substituting in.
With that said, Ms. Councilmember Rader, would you please?
Okay, Mayor, thank you. I move for substitute bill, for second reading of substitute bill number twenty-five oh dash, twenty-five dash oh four eight, an ordinance amending Article One in chapter of, in general of Chapter Ten, Emergency and Disaster Planning and Response of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri by enacting a new section ten through dash eleven, continuity of the government mayoral succession dealing generally with rules for the succession of mayoral power in the event of the, of absence or disability.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, substitute bill number twenty-five dash zero four eight by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Carlisle.
Thank you, Mayor, and I am part of the Rules Committee, and we did go through this. And at the end of the Rules Committee, I did say, "I think this needs to be amended." And I think it needs to be amended because, and I know that you gave us your feedback on the way you think it should have went, you know, from, through like it is now with the committees. The only change I think I need to ask be made, and I would make this motion, is that instead of Public Works Committee being number one, I would move Rules Committee up to number one and push everything down one. And the reason for that is, well, trifled, really. The Rules Committee made this. Second of all, the Rules Committee makes our rules. And if there's ever a question from this body that the mayor cannot answer, they refer to rules. So why would rules be last on the list and not first? So I would move to amend to put Rules Committee at number one under subsection B and then move everything down one.
Resting. I didn't pick the order, so.
No, I know you didn't pick the order. I, I'm just saying that I think that that should be the order.
I think whenever, is it accurate to say, or restate that? I believe I was told by someone, Mr. Dunning, you might have to help me here, that Public Works seems to be super involved with the operations of the city, and that seemed like a natural, is that right? A natural first stop?
I think it may have been Councilmember Shields, who was chair, I believe, of Rules, commenting that, you know, one of the thoughts about Public Works being first is usually in an emergency situation, right, we're dealing with some kind of public, public safety matter, and Public Works Committee is very well-versed into Public Works operations. So I think that was the thought behind that.
All right, I have a question, but I don't know what it is.
I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
So can you repeat that? Because are we going to deal, in a situation like that, is it going to be an operational thing we're going to deal with? I mean, really, not necessarily.
So I think part of the concern with, with this not being clarified, let's say that Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem were not available, right? And something occurred within the city where we activated our emergency operations, and we needed to call on the mayor to declare an emergency. That's where it's really critical when we think about our, sorry, our emergency operations. Once a declaration is made, then we can call upon state and other resources to help us in, in an emergency. So I, this is my memory, I think that was the thought process as I understood some of that discussion, as the Public Works being that first, the Public Works Chair being one of the first to go to in the order.
And I completely understand that. I'm just saying that the Rules, people on the Rules Committee are going to know how to do those things better. That's what I'm saying.
So it's a little confusing because you keep saying emergency, and I think of emergency in different ways. I think of emergency as in something happens where you lose the mayor and the mayor pro tem in one moment. And then I think of emergency like tornado. Mr. Head? Can you help with that? Because there's different kinds of emergencies.
Well, I did put this rule into the provisions surrounding emergency preparedness. So that is, that, that's the way I look at it. The primary function is this is giving us rules if for, God forbid, while, you know, you and the mayor pro tem are in National League of Cities, we get hit by a tornado. Who's next? That, that's really the question. And I believe it was Councilmember Shields as chair indicated that, that she felt that the operational committee might be more important. And I will say, having been, gone through those sorts of situations, the people that you want out doing things immediately are going to be your Public Works personnel, who may be clearing streets, your police officers who are going door-to-door, your firefighters who are going door-to-door. They're the operational folks. And that was the discussion that sort of surrounded that aspect that we had at Rules. But it also will apply if the mayor, mayor pro tem, just happen to be absent. It doesn't necessarily even have to be an emergency situation. It will apply when the mayor, mayor pro tem, just happen to be absent from the city at the same time.
Okay. Okay. All my questions went away, so you must have said some magical things there, Mr. Head. So I have a, a motion to amend on the floor, but I didn't ever get a second.
I mean, Mayor, you and I won't be here anyway, so it doesn't really matter. Doesn't matter what we say.
Well.
And there's that too.
It does say, until the council shall convene and select an acting mayor. That's the added verbiage that means it's, it is for a short duration. And I don't, I think the reason we all, we, we trust that we'll all make good decisions in a very, in the very short term. But I just, the only thing that, that just throws me about it is, I just think of, because I've only been in a couple of emergency situations in my entire tenure, and I feel like I was either on the phone with the fire chief or with the police chief, you know? And I'm never on the phone with the fire chief and the police chief. Like, that just doesn't happen. Like, literally, I go through Mr. Dunning for everything, and all of a sudden, in those situations, there's, there's more than just Mr. Dunning and I on the phone. It's Mr. Dunning, Brian Head, me, and the two chiefs. So that's the kind, that's where, that's where I pictured this covering, is who's going to be talking to that team of leaders.
I, I think everyone up here would be completely capable of being the third in line, I guess. But I, so.
I would say this, though, like.
Or, yeah.
You say that with this group. This is for future councils as well.
Well, so I guess, so I feel like, I feel like anyone that, that whoever the mayor pro tem is at the time is going to make a chair of a committee is probably going to be able to handle, in the rare case of being the third in line, for a small temporary time. So I don't, I mean, I personally don't care what the order is.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion, the, on the amendment, we're getting ready to vote on the amendment to change it to rules versus. We, we're voting only on changing to rules first.
Okay, and then we'll vote.
Mm-hmm, yep. Councilmember Rader?
Okay, but not to belabor this. But originally, what we talked about was that it would be whoever had the most seniority on the council. Before we went to the committee heads, and then I think we kind of, and then we said, you know, the, the chair that had a chair, like, like Councilmember Pryor said, that a count, a, a chair would probably have a lot more experience or have some more experience than someone else that was less experienced or didn't have the position of a chair. So I guess it doesn't, I don't, I guess it really doesn't, I guess it doesn't, it does matter. When I think about it, it does matter. Because if we really were in time of an emergency, we would want to have someone that, that had more experience, I believe, on the council. So whatever. Huh?
I'll, I'll debate this.
I mean, I just.
I'll, I'll debate this all night.
Okay, so, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold up anything. So whatever consensus is for this, I, I'll go along with.
I work with too many other mayors to know what kind of situation they're, they're in. And we're blessed here in Lee's Summit with this council, let me tell you. And so we get to make this decision knowing that we're going to be just fine. But there are other cities that have, you wouldn't want to just give it to somebody with seniority. You want to give somebody that's been put in a leadership position like the Rules Chair or the Public Works Chair. It needs to be, it needs to be someone that has actually earned that respect from their, from the council. Are you not a chair? Well, you're brand new.
She's a newbie.
That's why. You easily could, could chair any committee. And so who's the Rules Chair? Oh, Hillary's the chair. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm for, as long as it's a chair. It needs to be a chair. That's what I'm for. So if you want to change it to rules, then I'm going to call for the vote, and we'll change it to the rules first. All right. I'm calling for the vote on the rules only. We're changing it to rules first.
Mayor, can we do voice, voice, a voice vote? I can't get the system to do that for me tonight.
Okay. We'll do a roll, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Shields is absent. Councilmember Carlisle?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez?
No.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Rader?
No.
Councilmember Funk?
No.
Mayor Baird?
Are you serious? Serious. Have I had to? I was, I was going to go with whatever the consensus was. I really was. Wow. Now I have to get off the.
Have you ever had to do a tiebreaker?
No.
Look at you go.
First time for everything. Let's see it.
This is a friendly one. Come on, you and I don't matter anyway.
Friendly. It's friendly.
What's your problem with rules?
It's friendly.
Can I say something? Can I say something?
You said no to rules.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So honestly, I was okay with that. But, but Councilmember Pryor said, and Councilmember Rader, I mean, and you said it, anyone up here, and even future council people, if, if they have experience and they earned to be a chair, I think everybody's capable of fulfilling that role. That's what changed my, my mind. I just, I, I thought it was easy just to leave it as is. It was easier. That's why I went this direction.
I'm going to try to win favors with someone. I have no idea who, but I will go ahead and disagree with you and go with rules. So I'll be an aye. What's the vote?
Mayor, the vote is four ayes, three noes.
Go. So now it's a, an amended substitute bill that we are voting on. Yes.
Second reading, okay.
No, no, you've already read it.
We got to vote on the amendment.
Yep.
Well, we voted on the amendment, now we got to vote on this.
So now rules is first, Public Works is second, finance third, community economic development. I would change this whole order if I could, but that's okay. I'm joking. Is there any more discussion? I can't remember if that's you now, Councilmember Rader, or was that earlier? You're on my thing.
I did the second reading.
Oh, do you want to say anything on the discussion on this?
Oh, no.
Okay, good. All right, then let's vote on this. Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass unanimously, so we're all comfortable with.
So rules rule, right?
Rules rule.
It's really.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Doesn't really matter.
I didn't know I was going to have to make really tough decisions. But Councilmember Funk, would you please read bill number 25-049?
Mayor, before you move on to that one.
Whoa, whoa.
I believe we needed to read the, for approval, for adoption.
Okay. Councilmember Rader?
So am I going to?
Do you read substitute bill 25-048 as amended?
Thank you, Mayor. I will read substitute bill number 25-048 as amended to adoption and ordinance amending Article One in general of Chapter 10, Emergency and Disaster Planning and Response of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Lee's Summit, Missouri by enacting a new section 10 dash 11, continuity of the government mayoral succession dealing generally with rules for the succession of mayoral power in the event of absence or disability.
All right, thank you. Motion to adopt substitute bill number 25-048 as amended by Councilmember Rader, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it also is adopted unanimously. Thank you all. Now I'll go to Councilmember Funk to read bill number 25-049.
Mayor, I'm just thankful that my first bill reading wasn't bill number 25-048.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. I move to advance the second reading bill number 25-049 and ordinance approving amendment number seven to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. Motion to adopt bill number 25-049 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passed unanimously. Councilmember Funk, would you please read it for adoption?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption bill number 25-049 and ordinance approving amendment number seven to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as adopted by ordinances 9936, 9937, 9938, 9939, and 9940 by amending the authorized expenditures for the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 25-049 by Councilmember Funk, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 25-050?
I move to second reading bill number 25-050 and ordinance approving a purchase by the City of Lee's Summit, or, from Lee's Summit from Stryker Medical of new Life Pac-35 cardiac monitor defibrillators in the amount of $1,417,204.50 and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-050 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Carlisle. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number 25-050 and ordinance approving a purchase by the City of Lee's Summit from Stryker Medical of new Life Pac-35 cardiac monitor defibrillators in the amount of $1,417,204.50 and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the same by and on behalf of the city.
You have a motion to adopt bill number 25-050 by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously. Thank you. And Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number 25-051?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading and ordinance approving a purchase by the City of Lee's Summit from Motorola Solutions for 12 new portable radios for the fire department in the amount of $105,232, $230.52 and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. A motion to move to second reading, bill number 25-051 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Does move to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 25-051, ordinance approving a purchase by the City of Lee's Summit from Motorola Solutions for 12 new portable radios for the fire department in the amount of $105,230.52 and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the same by and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. A motion to adopt bill number 25-051 by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimous, and it's adopted. Committee reports. Are you on the Rules Committee? Do you want to make a report since she's not here?
Well, Rules Committee met and went over the bill that we just bungled for the last 30 minutes and passed it and sent it on here, so. Budget?
Finance and budget?
Also met and passed the bills that you see in front of you to come here.
Excellent. Good job.
We also talked about the budget schedule and how it will be coming forward. And that is on the website.
Good. Not seeing any other, yep, Councilmember Pryor, Public Works.
Yep, Public Works will be meeting Monday. It's coming up Monday, the 10th, I believe. Is that the 10th? Okay, yep, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Council comments? You buzz in?
Yeah, I did. I did, Mayor.
You would buzz in?
Uh, just for council comments, you said council.
Yeah, council comments, right?
I thought I saw your name, but it's not on there anymore, so I'll come to you in a second. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem Lopez.
No, I just noticed, do we have a new writer on staff? I noticed last night in Finance and Budget, those last two ordinances, the word "effectuate" was used twice. Yes. We have a new lawyer on staff? Just sounds different. Oh, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor. We, it was tough to kind of read for the first time.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
Councilmember Rader?
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, so about a year ago, my son was at the Westlake Hardware Store, and he was approached by a panhandler and hassled a little bit. And so I called Chief Forbes to visit with him about, was there anything that the police could do about people panhandling? And he, I was basically told that if it was on private property, there wasn't really much that could happen. So yesterday, I was at the BP gas station on Douglas, and I was, had filled up my tank, and I was getting ready to get into my car, and this man started yelling, not yelling, but he was shouting and saying, "Mysinda, mysinda." I do have my name on my car. And so I stopped, and he then told me that, I thought maybe he wanted to talk to me about real estate, because that happens sometimes, but he asked me if I could give him money for gas. And I said, "Well, I don't carry cash." And he said, "Well, I don't need cash." He goes, "You can use your credit card." And so, as you can imagine, I was really alarmed and a little bit frightened about it. And so I told him, "No." And as I tried to get into my car, he continued to hassle me, basically, about getting him the money. Well, then I got back, when I got back to my office, I wrote an email to Mr. Dunning and Chief Forbes about that situation. And basically, what, what can I do? Because I know many of us have seen people that are at the Sprouts, for instance, and different places around town that are hanging out, and they are panhandling and asking, begging for people for money, that type of thing. And I'm, I'm actually, after it happened to me, it was really unnerving and frightening, and I got to thinking about other people in the community, young mothers with children, teenagers driving around, elderly people. And I thought that perhaps there was something that we could do about it. So here's what I'm asking. I'm asking for council consensus to ask the city manager to conduct more research on this and request Mayor Pro Tem Lopez to assign the CEDC to see if there's anything different that we can do in this space from a regulatory or enforcement perspective. So basically, I'm asking you all for consensus and support to move this forward to, along with requests from Mayor Pro Tem Lopez, to move this forward on to CEDC so that we can see what we can, if there are ordinances that we can put into effect to support this. I have talked to other police officers, I talked to other police officers today, that feel like that this is a situation where at times there may be people that need help. They actually need help. But this would give the officers an opportunity to be able to assess the situation, and if it, if it's on a private property, to, to do something about it. So that's kind of what I'm asking at this point. And Mr. Dunning and Chief Forbes helped me with this. So if they want to join in on this, that's.